Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Norfolk School Committee for Tuesday, May 14th at 7:05 PM, as we do with all of our meetings, we begin with reading our mission statement. "The Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world." Roll call?
Jeff Chalmers.
Mark Flaherty.
Kelly Peterson.
Sean Dooley. Thomas is not going to be able to be here today because his wife's doing a town meeting, so. Public comment, anyone from the audience that would like to make any public comments to the Board can do so now. Remember, you are on camera and you're being taped for broadcasts, to be seen forever and ever. No? No one? Laurie, you gonna sing us off?
Can we pick people?
You know what, that's dangerous. I'm usually pretty okay with sliding right through. Okay, correspondence, let's see, we received a donation from the Norfolk TPA. They gave us a teacher stipend for Drug Busters, an extracurricular activity for $150. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Per our letter, we had one letter for reduction of force that goes out, and that's in your package.
And actually, just to share with you, this was a reduction of force, we had an opening due for retirement, and this teacher applied to that position and was appointed, so we do not have anything to be reduced.
Cool.
Excellent.
It was after that.
After the, okay.
That works.
Perfect. We'd also like to recognize Freeman Kennedy, is this the advanced band, or is this the all the band? The advanced band for their MICA, got another gold medal, they got the judge's individual rating of 45, which is as high as you can get. And so, just wanted to commend everyone that, you know, is familiar with the Freeman Kennedy Band knows what a phenomenal job they do. I wish John was here to recognize him, but, you know, they were-
John did send us the tape, so I should be able to play a couple of minutes.
Oh, we did?
Unfortunately, with MICA, they're not allowed to videotape, so it's only an audioteape, but I tried to play a few minutes and I can-
And I apologize, if I'm off my game tonight, I am sick, so I will be hopefully not too loopy tonight.
Not a lot of excuses.
So the sick thing is what makes you loopy?
Loopier, how about that?
I can't believe you opened it up.
And I'll save the audio for later at the end of the meeting, if anybody wants a copy of it, but we did want to recognize what an amazing achievement that was for the band and for John and for how hard all the kids worked to prepare for that.
That's very impressive.
Would also like to ask for a motion to reappoint Dr. Henry D'Angelo as our school physician. Dr. D'Angelo's been our school physician for a number of years, he's paid a $2,000 stipend for this, we're required by Mass. State law to have a physician. What he does is he works with the nurses and consults on any medical issue and things along those lines, with the nursing and the teaching staff, on anything along those lines, and also through his licenses, we're able to hold the medicines and things along those lines.
Is he a local guy?
He is, he's, do you know where he's located?
I think he's local.
It's local, but I don't, it's not in Norfolk, Walpole? Walpole, okay. Okay, is there a motion?
Second.
So move, you have to move the motion, second it.
I'm ready for you.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The sixth graders, four of them asked us to help sponsoring a fundraising, fundraiser. Dear School Committee members, we want to raise money for the victims of the Boston Marathon bombings, we think it is important to support the victims because they will be affected by this tragedy for the rest of their lives. Through our fundraising efforts, we can help with their medical bills, future livelihood, and much more with a donation to the One Fund Boston. We all think it is important to show the victims that our school community supports them throughout this challenging days ahead. We would like to have Boston Pride Days every Friday for the remainder of the school year. We would like staff and students to wear Boston attire such as Boston Pride t-shirts, Boston sports apparel, or Boston Marathon, or wear the Boston Marathon colors of blue and yellow on these special days. On these days, a donation of $1 suggested in order to raise funds for the donation to the One Fund Boston. Sincerely, Emma Daley, Happy Rappa, Kylie Breen, and Lily Potts. Is there a motion to allow this?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And also, we received yesterday, the Board of Selectmen requesting the presence of the elementary schools in the Memorial Day Parade, which is held in two weeks, a little less than two weeks. It's very nice, we've never been asked before, I mean, it's very, very nice, but in Dr. Flaherty speaking with the principals and with Mr. Forrick here, don't think it's enough time to actually coordinate and put something together to either get the band to march or students to march or anything like that, and I think it would be great if we could get, you know, do this going forward in future years and try to get some sort of presence of the schools. But, we don't want to do it completely halfway, and I think both, a lot of people are going to be out of town, including both principals, that weekend, so I think it'll be very difficult.
And we also have a lot of our students already participating through Scouts and through other organizations.
And there's also usually one class, if you have a teacher, is it usually does the reading of the Guinnessburg Address?
Right. I think that's at the middle, is it, I think that's the middle-
That's the sixth grade.
Oh, it's the sixth grade? Okay.
Oh, it's the sixth, okay.
I knew they were older, bigger kids.
I thought they were younger than that.
So, okay, so they will, you know, so we are participating on those levels, so, I think this, I just wanted to bring this up, that I think it's a great opportunity, but, you know, next year with a little further headway, we can get that through. Okay. Chair report. Community Day is June 8th, and we will be having, the TPA will be there, the, are you going?
I'm going.
The superintendent will be going, and wanted to see about having, if the school committee wanted to either set up our own table, or help out one of the other organizations, like the TPA or Nest, things along those lines that are going to be doing things. Nest is going to be doing a fundraiser and selling t-shirts, and I know the TPA is going to be doing something. Are the teachers doing any, nothing? Yeah, usually, yeah, I mean, I know Mrs. Balfour's usually there, getting her hair dyed and different tattoos and all the other, all the other fun things. So, wanted to see if we wanted to do our own table, I won't be able to, because I'll be cooking that day, but wanted to see thoughts on-
See, I don't mind having our own table, you know, then-
If we're gonna have our own table, we need to, you know, staff it from 10 to 3, so.
I'll maybe partially available that day.
Okay.
I have some other obligations.
Okay, good, so let's, we can talk about this offline and just see exactly who can do what, and what we can do in handles.
We'll see about taking that day off, or at least most of it. Could you?
Hold it, we just paid this doctor $2,000.
Yeah, technically, you know.
Yeah, exactly, get an excused absence?
Exactly.
Okay.
I need a doctor's note. I got work asitis.
Next issue is reorganization, you know, the Board hasn't changed from this year to last year. If anyone wants to run for any particular office, we can do, we can go through every single thing individually, but if everyone wants to keep everything the same, I'll entertain that motion as well, so.
I'm happy with doing what I'm doing.
Second motion is-
Keep everything the same, okay? Any other, any other discussion?
None.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, signage, one of the things that we learned, especially from this last election, is coming down the access road, the turn in, right in front of the superintendent's office, is very confusing, especially for people who have never been here before. So we're looking to get, I don't think we necessarily need to vote on it, but I just wanted to discuss it, get do not enter signs put there, so when cars are coming down, they understand that they're supposed to continue, continue forward, you know.
I couldn't count how many people I saw going down.
Right, we actually ended up putting up cones and, yeah.
And, you know, it worried me, because, you know, the kids were still in school at the time, and if the kids are coming out there-
Right.
It's just a dangerous situation.
Yeah, you're not looking that way either, I mean, you're looking to the left.
Right.
You're not expecting a car to be coming from your right.
And the painted arrows are confusing, because they stop before you get to that point, so people think they can take it left.
Right.
I would really support us putting a do not enter sign there.
Okay.
I agree completely.
Okay.
That's kind of why I brought it up to both of you.
Exactly, exactly, yes, that was Mark's idea. Or we're just gonna have the constable stand out there?
That can work too?
Yeah, 24/7, just blocking people from coming in.
You'll have to 24/7. Hate job.
Yes, we'll give you $70 a year, no problem.
That would be like a day.
Oh, okay. I don't know if 70 a day is a good rate at 24 hours, but okay. Tuition, one of the things that we talked about in the past was doing some tuition breaks for, you know, for multiple children, and also, Dr. Flaherty pointed out, that we currently have a tuition sliding scale that's, you know, already in place for the kindergarten students, and she would like to extend that down to the pre-K students as well. So it's the same, you know, it's a sliding scale that's, you know, that's needs based, based on income, and that way, it's not subjective on her part, that she doesn't have to, someone calls and says they want a reduction, it's, you know, it's already out in black and white, and it's the same as what we've already voted in place for kindergarten.
Basically, the way the sliding fee scales constructed, it considers families' total annual and monthly income, and the number of students in the household, and it recommends, based on those figures, a percentage of the tuition. We have to have that in place for kindergarten, because we receive the kindergarten grant, so it will tell you, based on income, what percentage of the kindergarten tuition those families pay. Past practice for preschool has been, you know, if people are experiencing financial hardship, medical situation, that they can come into the office and make a case for reduced tuition, but we really don't have any consistent guidelines for that. In the registration process, we did ask families to indicate if they thought they might be eligible for a reduced rate, so we could get a sense of it. It really looks like out of the entire preschool, it's only about 10 families, it should have a very minimal budget impact, but I think it would also make preschool programming a little bit more accessible for families that are struggling financially, which, you know, serves the community well. I think it gives us a little bit more consistency in how we're applying that, and, you know, we do have some additional tuition coming in, because we changed the programs for preschool, we have that multi-age class now, so I do think that the budget impact would be minimal, and it would allow us, in a pretty consistent systematic way, to better support some families that are struggling financially.
And, you know, that would obviously help out children with multiples as well, but one of the other things that Dr. Flaherty and I were talking about, that she'd mentioned, you know, heard of some other schools, and I've heard the same thing, that do a basically zero interest loan for anyone that has multiples, so instead of having to have, you know, if you have two children in the grade at the same time, instead of having to pay all of it that year, it's spread out over two years, and that way, it's not unduly penalizing kids, you know, people that have kids back-to-back-to-back-to-back, I mean, they're getting the exact same thing as the people who have multiples, so, that was another thought on that, so I wasn't sure if-
I love that idea, no problem with the idea, it would make it easier for them to pay it back, and increase the likelihood of us actually getting that money back.
Right.
You know, so, you know, I kind of like the idea, you know, I have no problem with it.
From a business standpoint, do we have any type of penalty clause in case, after the two-year period, that they haven't paid it?
It would be the same as per policy that we developed last time, with the late payment notice, the 30 days and 60 days, that we have the opportunity or the option to refer that to collections, plus they can no longer enroll in an abbreviated program, if they have a balance outstanding at the end of the year.
Okay.
I think the idea with the multiple children was, if you had, for example, twins going into kindergarten and you charge tuition, we talked about giving a discount for the second child, but then, you know, a lot of them were children two years apart, you know, or back-to-back, that was payment full, so, I think the idea was allowing the parents in that situation to make the payments, basically, we developed a payment, and it'd be 20 payments per son, time.
Sure.
Just spread that out over the two years, and from a business fiscal perspective, you know, it's okay for us to collect it that way.
What type of processes there in qualifying some of these people, especially if you've got someone who, say, is delinquent? I mean, what's the processes far as accessing the money? I mean, of course, we're gonna have letters going out to them, but when they're qualified, do they meet with their finance manager here, or are they-
What do you mean, if they want to apply for the reduced rate?
If they do, and if they're late. I mean, how, what type of process do we have involved with that?
There are two different processes. If they want to apply for a reduced rate, they have to bring us a month's worth of pay stubs and verify income, and then we use those, whether it's bank statements, checks, however they do it, they have to document their income. We use that to calculate monthly income, they meet with either myself or with Donna, our business manager, then we look at the income, we look at the sliding scale, what they'll be charging, then we send them out a confirmation letter of what their monthly payment will be, and then we adjust that in the system.
You're the same people that oversee hardship cases as well?
Yeah, pretty much, pretty much. And then, as far as late payment, if they do get notices from us, if it's 30 days past due, and then again, 60 days, we just sent out letters letting people know that our 60 days past due, that they aren't eligible, their children aren't eligible to enroll in any tuition-based programs, so that would be transportation, band, you know, any SAC, anything like that, until they either work out a payment plan, or they bring their account to balance.
And you said there were 10 families right now outstanding?
No, we'll do the outstanding, I said there were 10 families that indicated in the preschool registration that they thought they may be eligible for a reduced rate.
Right, they haven't applied yet, because we don't have it as a policy.
Yep. But there is, that, out of everybody that enrolled, there were 10 families that indicated they would be, thought they may be eligible for assistance, based on the sliding fee scale that's online.
Out of what total amount of families?
We have 100 students in preschool, right, about?
Hundred?
Pretty close.
10%?
Yep.
10% of the hardship?
About.
Okay.
And that, you know, and that's people that might have hardship, you know, they might-
I just want to make sure that they're somehow covered, that somehow we can help them.
Right, exactly, I mean, as I say, you know-
And I think that's what the sliding fee allows us to do.
Right.
And it's very fair and equitable, because you're basically paying based on the percentage of income, so it's, you know, some people pay 75%, some people pay 50%, it really depends on that.
And that was only for kindergarten, now we're amending it to pre-K.
We'd like to use the same scale for pre-K.
Yeah. I guess that would, will that have to be a policy change?
Um.
It would have to be a policy change.
Yeah, well, by policy, you have to set the tuition, so you'd just be adopting, this is a tool for managing tuition, I don't think there's a policy.
Might be a incentive.
But you're actually amending it, though, because it includes now an additional-
Yeah, I think we could amend it on a single, I don't think we have to do three readings, I think we can do a single reading amendment.
Okay.
So let's do that for next time.
Okay.
Is this sliding fee scale consistent on the school districts, or is it just ours?
Yep, anybody that has funds from the state for the kindergarten grant has to have a sliding fee scale.
But it's the same?
They publish it, yeah.
Yeah.
And then we put in our tuition rate.
But we don't get to determine our-
No, they put in the figures for us, and then we put in, you know, our rate is 3,600, every district puts in their own, you know, annual tuition, but the parameters are set by the state, yeah.
Right.
Do we have a calculator online that would enable a family to go online and find out exactly what they could qualify for?
They can look at the sliding fee scale, and they can, they can look at, it calculates, our published sliding fee scale has our tuition information in it, so they can look at their monthly income and read across to figure out what their monthly payment would be.
Yeah, it's not as complicated as needing a spreadsheet, it's like, oh, if you make $50,000-
You pay 25%, and this is the monthly rate, so it's all there.
So if you make 50 to 60, this is what you pay, if you make, you know, 20 to 30.
It hasn't been customized for preschool, though, yet.
You wouldn't find it easier if they had, say, an online calculator in some form of Excel spreadsheet, so that when they put in an amount, it essentially would tell them what they would be paying?
It already has it all published, because there's only five, there's only five levels.
Okay.
It's all written out, you can go.
Yeah, like-
No, no, I've seen it.
Whether you make 55 or 60, it's the same.
Yep.
I mean, it's all bracketed.
The percentage.
No, no, I've seen it, I just seen if there was a-
But I think what's nice about this is it takes Ingrid out of the equation of having to make-
It feels subjective, I think it creates greater access to the programming.
And everyone's idea of hardship is different.
Right.
And this scale also has, also takes into account the amount of children?
Yep, size of the family and monthly income.
Over a certain period of time?
Yep.
And the total amount of-
Total amount of income for the family and the total number of members of the family.
Right, and also, if you're having two chi, you know, if you've had-
No, that doesn't, that doesn't factor in.
Okay.
But, if you had two children, and you were eligible, they'd each be paying whatever the reduced rate was.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I see, okay.
And now, we'd be offering the 20 payment option.
And a family with four, it's a higher threshold than a family with two?
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Or two children.
Right. So it's factoring in a couple of things.
Yeah, I was imagining that the impact on the budget would be-
Minimal.
I mean, if only 10% of the families are within the program, and they're paying some form of rate, maybe a reduced rate, then you're only thinking maybe 2% to 3% of possible budget.
Right, I think it'll have a minimal, and we already have families that we have made exceptions for, based on the information that they provided, it's just more consistent.
But I think it makes it easier on the family as well, too, because they're not coming in, trying, needing to make a case.
Yep.
You know, I think that would be much easier for them.
So what is, we have been doing this all along, correct?
For kindergarten, but not for preschool.
We're extending it to, okay.
But we have been doing it all along for preschool, we just haven't had a sliding scale, it's all just been completely-
Individual cases, case by case.
Individual, case by case by the superintendent.
This is much better than-
Yeah, I would think.
I think so, too.
Jeff, to follow up on yours, I'll skip ahead just to the past due amounts, since we changed our policy, the past due from 2011, 2012, which was, I think roughly $30,000, is now down to $2,700. And then the past due on the, this year, bus fee, we only have $14.40 out, 270 in band fees, 58 in fourth grade band fees, and then we still have roughly $60,000 in pre-K and kindergarten, but that's April, May, and June bills, I mean, so, you know, that's not necessarily, these are, these are the one-month late payments.
People getting the one-month reminders, yeah.
And I think with that changed, that'll help, especially on the pre-K portion of it.
Right.
Yep, I think so, too.
Not long-term, I mean, but we're hoping we can try and regain those fees, I think short-term, it'll basically help with the budget.
Right, exactly. Well, yeah, because we're not chasing it, I mean, and then when we're not spending, you know, having Roxanne making, you know, and Pam making phone calls and chasing people down, and be a lot more efficient. And then, discussion, Backpack Express, and this is more of a policy discussion, but I just kind of wanted to bring it up, because I received two calls about it last week. There's some confusion in so much as, and I think, you know, we might want to tighten up the language a little bit on our school partners, I had two different people call me regarding the same issue, but they felt that some school partners were basically allowing other people to use their name in order to get a flyer home to, you know, to the families, if, you know, like, say, I belong to Norfolk Lions, and I want to have, and, you know, diabetes awareness is important to me, and we're doing a diabetes fund walk, you know, I'll just have the Lions say, all right, let's sponsor it, we'll tag on Norfolk Lions, sponsor the diabetes fund walk, you know, at $25 or whatever, and now it's an official Lions function, and so it's being pushed through, and then, you know, people are able to use the Backpack Express, because it falls under a school partner.
The people who mentioned it or brought forward the issue, did they give specifics as to-
They did, but I don't want to necessarily give too many specifics, because I don't want to identify the people.
No, no, that's fine, I just want to know-
They gave specifics in so much that they requested to have something sent home about their charity, and a very similar event, charity, et cetera, came home, like, after they were denied, two weeks later, a very, almost identical thing came through, but it was under the heading of one of the community partners, even though it wasn't necessarily a community partner event, as I was saying, it's, you know, so I think that's something that we need to kind of, I don't necessarily know how we'll do it, but I think I just wanted to kind of get a discussion going on that, and see what everyone's thoughts are, you know, with that. This is, you know, I think the community partnership has been working really, really well, this is the first incident.
What you should do is they can try to eliminate it from being an event sponsored by one of the community partners, so like, say, the Lions sponsored that walk for residents or whatever.
Right.
You know, it doesn't count either, but if it was a Lions event, for itself, like, the Lions said, hey, we're putting this on-
Like when they do the dare, it's the Lions dare run.
Then that would count, but it has to be their event, not a sponsor event.
Right, it was the same.
So that would be language that, we have a policy subcommittee meeting on the 20 first.
Right.
Do you want, I can have that added to the agenda, and we can come back with a recommendation.
What are your thoughts, Kelly?
I wouldn't police that, though, I mean, how would we know what's-
Well, from the standpoint of, I mean, and I think that's what's difficult about it, is, you know, if something comes in, and, you know, I mean, I hate to put Ingrid and Pam in this position.
Well, we could look at the language we developed around school signage, which, for school partners, was that only school partners are allowed to put any signs for events, but the sign, any events marketed had to have a direct relationship with the school and involve students, so that might be a way to tighten up the criteria a little bit. You can't advertise, like, the Lions can't advertise a community function on school property, only functions that are directly involving our students.
Right.
So there's ways we could tighten the language around what goes home in the backpacks.
So when they do their dare run, since it supports the dare program-
It would be-
Considering that the partnership recommend, or applications are done every year, possibly put a disclaimer on there, essentially saying that any partner that is approved, who essentially is caught with something like this, could potentially lose their partnership.
Right.
We still gotta get an updated school partner application form, though, too.
We're working on that, if that's on the agenda for the policy subcommittee.
So.
So we could look at those two things.
We're going to make it online.
Yes, I would, you know.
The tech committee's gonna make it online. No, I was gonna say, I talked to Adam about making it online with a fillable database, and he says it's very, very easy, and he had, we would have no problem, soon as we get it done, you could just actually just fill it in, and it would be shot straight over to the schools, and it would be, you know, that way, they have to check, you know, mandatory fields-
Right.
Would be filled, you know, filled in, it wouldn't kick back, you know, unless all the mandatory fields were covered and things along those lines, so, he said there's no problem, so, hopefully.
Add it to the list.
We do.
Put that on for the agenda.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe we put some type of, you know, these events, I'm sure they just come up sporadically, depending on the need or the situation, maybe if we put some language in there stating that we have to have a certain X number of days notice before we send out anything in the backpacks, and it has to be based on approval or, you know, discussion between, I don't know if the school committee needs to get involved with all of those, but discussion between somebody at school and the school partner.
Doing approval.
Well, it's kind of like when I first got on the committee, I emailed Sean, my sister Well, it's kind of like when I first got on the committee, I emailed Sean, my sister and I run a nonprofit foundation, and I actually asked him, you know, can I send out a notice via email to, like, everyone, to all the teachers? And everything, you know, just letting him know about the event, you know, maybe they want to show up and, you know, that was one of the things he said, absolutely not. And so, he said, you can send it to the committee members, because we're colleagues, which I did, and none of you guys showed up, no, just kidding. But, you know.
I wrote a big check.
We're still waiting on it.
I was, I didn't, I didn't mail it, I just wrote it.
You know, so, you know, you know, we, I just, if we get something like that in writing, it would-
Yeah, and I, and I think it's, and unfortunately, I think, you know, in, in a lot of these instances, it is somewhat subjective.
Yeah.
It is, you know, you are talking very personal issues, someone has, has a passion for their, you know, for their charity and, and it, you know.
I think so, that, I mean, I think one thing that we need to be clear about is that we do have, anybody can post on the community, you know, website. So it's just a matter of hard copies going home. So I think it's okay to tighten the language, it's just events that involve directly our students' participation. Because if it's a diabetes fund run or anything else, they can still advertise that on our website. That's not, doesn't have the same level of, you know, filtering. It's, the goal was to try to not have kids, because we want them to read things sent home by their teachers and to review. We don't want to bar the backpacks with, with mailers, so.
That was the problem three years ago when we started this, was it's, you know, we were getting five things a day, plus, you know, not to mention that, you know, especially at H. Olive Day, the teachers were spending half their day stuffing backpacks.
Yeah, in this age of modern technology, I'm sure the school has email contacts for at least a lot of the parents, you know, or maybe we can develop that, instead of putting stuff in the backpacks to send home, everything is given to the school. And maybe it's a PDF form or whatever, and email it to-
We, no, we do that, we do that currently.
We do use that with Connect Ed for, for school-based messages, but we've got to be careful, too, because we, when we, we are careful about what we send home and so that it doesn't get filtered and parents read, you know, the communications, so.
And one of the other problems that we have, I mean, and this was, you know, a long time ago, it's, it's policing the different charities. I mean, there are, there are, as we all know, you know, unethical people out there that will have a charity and 99 cents of every dollar goes in their pocket and things along those lines. And, you know, we felt that one of the reasons, you know, we wanted to tighten this up was that there were things going out, that we had no idea whether, you know, it was a legitimate charity or not a legitimate charity and things like that. And I think that's what's nice about the, you know-
Partner.
You know, doing the partners, but also doing the, the monthly newsletter. You know, in the newsletter, we have that little section where, you know, here's community events. We're not endorsing it, we're not, you know, authorizing it or anything like that. These are just things that, you know, people have come in and posted, and if you want to read them and click on them, you know, and link through to find out more about them, here you go. And if you don't, so be it.
Okay.
So we'll add that to the agenda for the policy subcommittee and we can come back with some recommendations on language.
Okay. And that is it for me.
All right. All right, so we have a, a group here of teachers from the Social Studies Committee. At the beginning of the year in October, the school committee approved a new curriculum review cycle process. This year was our year to take a comprehensive look at the social studies curriculum. And they're here to share the results of their review and their recommendations for moving forward, so. Debbie, I don't know if you want to introduce your committee and they're going to use this, so if people want to come back to it.
Thanks for having us tonight. None of this work would be possible without the people that are here with me tonight. The Social Studies Committee is represented by grade-level teachers who have worked in a focused way to accomplish a lot of challenging work. This work has actually covered two years, and so this is the culmination that we come before the school committee with, for our findings. So I'll take you through a condensed process that, that we have done. But I want to make sure everybody acknowledges the talent that sits in this district specifically on this committee. It's a new, one of the newest curriculum committees, kind of given the tallest task of coming through a curriculum review. So the work was steep and, and quick, and this was a group, these people right here were up to the task and were an absolute privilege to facilitate them.
Deb, would you mind introducing them?
That's what I'm going to go.
I'm sorry.
Don't get ahead of her.
So our kindergarten representative is Kathy Murphy White. And our first grade representative is Lori Leidner. And we have two second grade reps, Anne McKenzie and Amy Pfeiffer. And our third grade rep is Fran Pericles. And our fourth grade rep is Pat Brogan. Our fifth grade, also two reps, are Ellen Horton and Risa McKenzie. And our sixth grade rep is Tom Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Thank you for all coming.
So to give you an idea of what this curriculum review process entailed, these are five bullet points that kind of shrink down what two years of work was. And the first was to take, kind of unpack and discover what's going on in the district as far as social studies. Social studies is a, a area that is not getting a lot of curriculum limelight with the Common Core and the, within ELA and math. That's definitely taken kind of national precedence. But social studies, we feel very strongly, has a very strong fit, even though it doesn't get highlighted curriculum-wise. In the focus in the Common Core is in nonfiction, reading, and writing. So we really took an opportunity here to see how can we get social studies in that ELA time slot. So the day doesn't get longer, how do we make sure the content in social studies, which is the richest content to study, nonfiction, how do we embed that in? So that, that was our first task. The second task was to create the learning expectations document. And that's a document that used the understanding by design model to focus on the frameworks, which were written in 2003 in the state of Massachusetts. With no real, there's not a push to rewrite it. So we feel like it's going to stick, the 2003 framework is going to stick for a while. So when we did that learning expectation documents, it's not something you'd want to undertake if it was going to change. So the feeling is, is that the frameworks that are in place now will stay. Then we took the task of compiling a list of resources and materials that are currently in the district. So we, we know what we had and what teachers were using. And then to identify some professional development opportunities for both teachers and parents. We wanted to include the community in this process. So the committee did develop a Google Doc survey, which we had tremendous response to, and you'll see slides, directing us from various kind of stakeholders in this. And then the last was to investigate new materials and new units to meet the needs of, of the learning expectations document. That last bullet, you'll see the new materials, has been a focus of the committee's latest work. And obviously, the ongoing work will be matching new units to kind of round out the, the needs. So we're going to take a look at just some culled information from the teacher survey. There was a process here, learning how to write a, a question so that you know what information you're going to get, get back. But we had a tremendous response from teachers in the district. It was about a 20-question survey, oh, same at the parents, it was about a 10-question survey. And coming out of the teacher survey were two focused area, economics and civics in the district, that teachers were looking for also professional development opportunities and materials to teach those two areas. This is a, really just a bullet point to let you know how long it's been since social studies has had any face time as far as curriculum goes. And again, I'm pretty sure that five or more years is, is a lot more than five years, but that was the way the question was phrased, so that's the way I'm presenting it. So what we have is a staff here that hasn't had the opportunity to expand and develop their social studies understandings and creating units or any kind of focus. And also that the professional development within the district has, has been lagging behind as well. This is not uncommon in a lot of districts. This is something that is pretty standard. And I would actually say that Norfolk is taking a, a lead, especially talking to vendors. They're, they're, you know, they're hot on ELA and math products. So it's a, a important point that, that Norfolk queued up to let social studies kind of get some attention. Again, more information on the, the amount of average time teachers are spending teaching social studies. And that's just a breakout of the H. Olive Day School and the Freeman Kennedy School. And you can see an incremental increase in sixth grade where, you know, there's a focused topic, you know, every day.
Are they teaching social studies in kindergarten?
They are teaching social studies. You're bringing up a really good point because there is, I think there is some misunderstanding around what social studies might look like in kindergarten. And by and large, and I'm certainly happy to have Kathleen speak, but in general, kindergarten becomes that, kind of that birth of, who am I, how do I fit into my family, how do I fit into this place called a classroom? And how do I fit within this school? So it becomes very, it starts egocentric and moves out to the building level. So kids spend a lot of time on social competency, that's, that's where open circle comes into play. And a lot of people understand the social emotional connection to the open circle curriculum, but it actually has a very strong tie to that early social studies civics understanding. This is the, an integration question, you know, how do we get social studies into an already busy day? And the district feels, along with a lot of other research, that you push it into the ELA block with a focus on your nonfiction teaching. And then I had to pitch that 92% of the teachers reported that they spend their own money supplementing this instruction. So this kind of steered us to the, the focus of what do we need?
Do we have an idea of parts when how much they're spending supplementing?
Too much.
That part of their education, well, obviously it's too much, they have to spend their own money, but-
Right.
I think you're going to get a sense of that as a presentation, what, where the gaps are and what we need to, to better fill them.
But I think your question was more about how much they spend. I didn't ask that question, so I wouldn't be able to, to tell. Then we went to a parent survey, which I'm very happy that we included in this process. We had 195 responses, which is a, we figured about 20% of the community responded with parents, with families in the two schools in the district. 72% reported that they had not read the social studies learning expectations. And this, we felt was, created a nice opportunity for that PD around what do parents need. So we've got this document that these people created that definitely is directing and steering the social studies learning that's going on in the district. But we really need to shore up, what does it actually mean for, for parents at home? So that's an area that I, we think we can do a better job on. We can't just put something up on the web and assume that there's understanding and, and interest in necessarily in reading it. But I think if we create opportunities, we've got a dedicated community, we can kind of unravel some of those, kind of, the educational aspects to that learning expectations document. And then we've got 81% of parents report that their child's nonfiction reading level is moderate or high. We go back to tying in English Language Arts and the focus in the Common Core on nonfiction text complexity. And so text complexity is an important piece of, of what's coming down the pike for the Common Core. And social studies lends itself beautifully to that, to that end as well.
I hate to ask this question, but the second portion, 72% reported they have not read it?
We really feel that-
I'm kind of disgusted by that.
Jeff, I think it has to do with the fact that there, there was a lot of work done on developing the content of those. And then, once they were completed, we uploaded them.
Yeah.
But I think that speaks a lot to how well we communicated that information, where it was for families, when to read it. So that, that tells us that we might need to think about how we're distributing and sharing that out. Because not everybody searches the web for, for new information.
No, no, I, I understand, I'm just saying from a parental standpoint. I mean, I'd like to find a legitimate reason why they wouldn't take the time.
I think people may not know it's up there.
They might not have known that it's up there, yeah, I think that's an area that we felt we could be, do a better job at communicating.
Kind of like with the 81% of parents who say, say their children read at a moderate, high level, how does that relate to what we're seeing in schools? I'm sure every parent thinks their kid's doing great at everything, when, you know, an objective viewpoint might say otherwise. Do we know what-
Well, it is their perspective, it was a survey, so it wasn't measured.
I know.
But it was a perception that, that the level that their students are reading, that their children are reading nonfiction.
Comparatively, that number to what we're seeing in the schools, do we know what that, do we compare it?
What we do know is that the expectations for nonfiction text reading that are coming down from Park, which will replace the MCAS, are significantly higher. And that kids are going to be expected to be able to read more complex texts, to be able to develop an argument, to do more in-depth content writing. So we do know that there's going to be, even if our kids are performing fairly well, the ante is really being upped and there's going to be more significant expectations for performance coming forward. So I think we have some concerns about that.
Okay.
And parents identified economics as the four strands in social studies, civics, geography, history, and economics. That's the way the frameworks are divided. And parents identified economics as the area of greatest need for improvement, as did teachers. So these are just last two points that I think kind of celebrate the community that we live in. 95% of the parents report that they visit local and national landmarks. So we have a community that's invested in kind of broadening their children's kind of civic understanding and historical understanding. And 94 to 96% of the parents report that, that is a, an important critical piece that they want for their children's educational experience. So these are just going to be six, seven slides of a comparison between what the current resources are in each grade level and then the requested resources, so the work that we've done on what materials we need. It is not a specific list because it, it got unmanageable. I certainly have that information for you. We did bring, there are two grade levels, really only one grade level that is looking at a new text, which is grade six. The rest became kind of broadening and rounding out the needs in history, civics, economics. So this is, on the left, you see we've got some standard equipment in every classroom. That's where you see that open circle competency materials in kindergarten, because it, it lives very large in, in the kindergarten grade level. And so they're looking for guided level reading texts, which is, which are opportunities for kids to read at a variety of levels, the same content.
Do we have any samples of those?
Didn't you?
Hey Deb, could you get, could you get me bigger copies?
Absolutely.
Just so I can-
Absolutely.
Email them to me, that'd be great, thank you.
They're nonfiction texts that cover the social studies contents that are accessible to students' reading level by the grade level.
2002.
Those are just samples, those aren't the, what we're ordering. Those are just samples of guided reading texts.
Our current books are hold?
Say again?
Our current books are hold?
It varies in the guided reading, reading texts. I do have some of that more specific information when it comes to some hard copy that we're looking to replace. So first grade is the same, similar situations. There were Nystrom, which is just a, a company that, that created a geography kit that was purchased, I'm not sure how long ago, it was quite a few years now, that that has been present and is still used in the grade levels. I think first and second grade has access to those. But this creates an opportunity on the requested resources to integrate some of the mapping software that's out there. Also, on every grade level, you'll see a weekly subscription request. So that's for Time for Kids, Discovery for Kids, National Geographic. We'd like to get as much nonfiction, short text, in the hands of students every day that can go home. So that, you're going to see that at every grade level.
Deb, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to bother you.
Sure.
Or interrupt. Just a question relative to digital formats. Costly, less costly to basically provide this? And then if we had the ability with these kids reading this stuff, would we have these things possibly posted based on copyright? So that they, if they wanted to grab things at home and pull them downline and they could read them at home?
To your, to your first point, one of the things that have come out, especially in the text purchasing, that it, what they hold on to price-wise is the content, not the delivery system. So the, the hard copy text varies very little price-point wise from the online purchase, which is interesting. I'm not sure I expected that, but that's, that's what we found out. But with that becomes a lot of online instructional resources. So the teacher now has access to bringing up the text online, manipulating it, and, and having students interact with a lesson plan. But if I understand you correctly, your second point was, do we have like a multi-system for students to kind of access online literature?
Form of a repository, so if kids get home and they say their parents wanted to be able to read these books at home, they could download these onto their iPad and be able to view them.
I know we're currently using the, is it the Raspids? And the Reading A to Z, and those are all electronic libraries. The parent connection, I'm not exactly sure the access to, but I can find out for you.
You'll find that those prices, it'll probably take about three years. It'll come down, because in the business side, that's exactly the same play that, that's exactly what they played with a lot of companies. It's the same concept that they wouldn't give a price reduction-
Yeah.
And then they changed.
It was interesting, I'm not sure we expected it, but- This is second grade, again, you're looking at some of the dated materials on the current resources, 1986, 2005. There's been some super purchasing from PTA grants. We've got teachers at every grade level moving this topic along that are spearheaded by, by a variety of people in the district. So a lot of the biography sets were acquired that way. Third grade is the first grade that uses a text, it's called Massachusetts Our Home. We currently have the 2004 edition. There was some manufacturing or binding issues with that, I believe, pretty shortly after it was purchased. So we are looking to, there's a 2014 edition coming out, and we are looking to replace the texts that are currently in place.
Do we know what that text costs?
Yeah, the budget numbers are coming. Debbie, does Massachusetts 2014, does that have an online component?
It does.
Yeah.
It does. That's a standard text, they, they have no competitors, that is the text that every school uses in Massachusetts. And I, what I liked about this, too, with Fran, you were responsible in, in putting some thoughtful resources together with a guided trolley and, and bus tour of Norfolk to kind of round out kids' experience. We know third grade is where we focus on town, in-state. Again, that, that circle getting bigger from self to town by third grade. So giving kids an opportunity to kind of explore.
Deb, I'm sorry. From a pricing standpoint, do we negotiate with the state relative to these vendors? From a pricing standpoint, do we negotiate with the state relative to these vendors? Or is it, is it school by school?
Purchasing wise?
Yeah, so as an example, say there was one or two vendors involved. Does the state do any negotiating on licensing? Or is it individually, school does it, the negotiation?
I'm pretty sure it's individual. That's my understanding.
I would find that this, from a state standpoint...
If we're purchasing something over a certain price, we have to get multiple quotes. But there's certain texts, like the Massachusetts, that there are no competitors. Um, and we negotiate with the vendor for that.
I would think where the state has a certain mandate, that they would be, I know, this sounds crazy.
There you go.
I know, I know. I, I know, I'm talking nuts here, all right? This is just from a business side. Common sense, that you would think, you would think that, um, the state would basically say, hey, listen.
Right.
All these vendors, we want mass pricing. So, based on that, this is what we're going to basically pay.
Right.
And we're going to want this distributed throughout the state, so that they would be able to say, okay, great, now the schools can afford it.
Good luck with that one.
Well, I just happen to be, you know, in charge of legislation, Sean, for the next year, right?
Right.
So, I have no problem going to our administrators and legislators and say, hey, guys, what's going on here?
But be careful, because if you look at some of the state contracts that we have out there, where the state has done this...
Yeah.
That makes your options.
You have very limited options, and you could negotiate it on your own. You know, I, I just experienced it for the past three years on the school building committee. So, there were plenty of things that I could have gone down the street and bought the exact same table for half the money, but those state contract already negotiated. So, there's a lot of other moving factors in, in that, and I won't get into my political rant.
So, so is this the concept of, you know, a, a specific nut and bolt costs five dollars versus what you can get at the, down the street for a nickel?
Yep.
All right, just so we're clear on that.
And as in, that's part of the problem, that would be what we're worried about from the book's standpoint as well.
Because the state doesn't care what you can afford. They just say, okay, well, we're going to get you X amount for this, and then that company probably ends up giving the state a kickback on it too. You know?
And also, outside of the Massachusetts texts, as we go on, there, there are multiple vendors. And so, we really wanted to see what text we felt was the best fit for the district and not be limited to, these are the three the state approves. So, you know, there's that piece too.
Yeah, is a catch twenty-two.
Thank you.
Fourth grade also, um, looked, you can see some of the, the dates of additions of texts that they're currently using, two thousand and two, nineteen ninety-six, two thousand. And they are still using them, but there are obviously some that are outdated and not, um, not the current additions that we need. So, fourth grade did research, uh, there was a tremendous responsibility at each grade level to take back to, as the rep on the social studies committee, to go back to their grade level and investigate the materials. We did have a vendor day. Um, and one of the things that the fourth grade would like to pilot next year is a text. The fourth grade doesn't currently have a text, um, and that's a Pearson product called My World Social Studies. But in addition to that, you're seeing this six-sets books, um, and that's the guided reading levels around fourth grade. We're looking at regions. So, uh, the regions in the country, and then they go borders, Mexico and, and Canada. Fifth grade, um, same thing. They're looking electronically for, um, iPad subscriptions for kids' discovery. Again, going deep into biographies, we felt like that was a, kind of a rich area for us to address some of the, um, Common, uh, Common Core and Park things coming down the pike. But again, you're looking within the district, two thousand and one, nineteen ninety-eight. So, it's, it's been a while since the, the district's been able to kind of focus on these materials. Sixth grade is where we're looking again at a new text. Um, and, um, currently in place is a Prentice-Hall product from two thousand and three. And in sixth grade, we, we know we get into world geography. Um, so, in the vendor day, we had an opportunity to go over some of the National Geographic, World Cultures text, which is a brand-new edition, twenty thirteen, and that is the, the recommendation from the committee for that text. And, um, I think Tom brought a copy of it.
Yeah.
If people wanted to...
What we're using now, the, um, Prentice-Hall product is quite dated. When we study Europe and it looks forward to the upcoming European Union, where we know that's been successful the last twelve years, um, really speaks to how old the textbooks are that we have. Also, we kind of bottomed on Rush in two thousand and four, when the, uh, frameworks changed and we were faced with a complete change in the sixth grade curriculum. We went from teaching ancient cultures to teaching world geography. We bought the first one that we found. We bought fifty copies per book. I don't even have enough copies to send home with my students. Okay, so, and, over time, copies have been destroyed and lost and not replaced. And so, what we're dealing with is a very dated product. What I found was the newest product that we've yet, two thousand and thirteen copyright from National Geographic. It's a beautiful book. It covers absolutely everything that's in the state frameworks and then some. I don't know if that's around you, so you...
Is it also available in a digital format?
Now, the way that this works is, um, with every paper subscription, you get a complimentary digital format.
Yep.
With every digital format that you purchase, you get a digital format.
Yep.
So, you can pay for the digital format and get the books for free.
Politics, pathetic.
Or you don't have to take them if you don't want them.
But I think what we liked about it is basically...
I'd have more fun banging my head against the wall.
What I think we really liked with the National Teach, and, and most of the texts now, is that when you purchase the student anthologies, the hard copies, they get an online subscription. So, the entire text is available to kids, once we purchase the books online. They can read all the passages, they can have the passages, they can click it or read it aloud to them. Um, there's a ton of video support material, um, time-lapse videos, um, all kinds of things. You can speak more to that, Tom, I think.
One example, Tom, as you were saying, I mean, you don't even have enough books to send home. The concept of having it on an iPad, say, oh, delete it, oh, here we go, reload it.
Right.
They'll have it. If we buy these books, they'll all have online access.
If we buy this book, we'll have a non-subscription for everybody to have a digital copy.
Yep.
Is it, is there an ongoing licensing fee per year, ongoing?
No, it's when you purchase, I don't know when it will expire, but...
There isn't a licensing, yeah.
For the foreseeable future, that's hard, so you...
Nope. If we buy a hundred and fifty books, we have a hundred and fifty online.
So, they have, there's no...
Okay, do you buy new ones when they come out finished?
No, it's...
Right.
But you don't, do you have to?
No.
So, it's free updates?
Yep.
Yes, yes, they're constantly...
For how long? For an annual standpoint, or do you have to buy a subscription annually?
No, you don't.
Very easy to test.
So, you purchase the text...
Yep, and we have the online...
And the digital subscription we have.
Right, but you purchase the text, so essentially, and whenever there's any digital updates, you automatically get them?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Like that.
Well, here's our punchline. Uh, this is the projected budget for, um, the requests that you saw outlined at each grade level. So, the totals are bulleted by, by grade levels. You obviously see the grade, the grade levels that went after guided reading texts, obviously were at a lower cost. Um, when you start getting into the textbook purchasing, um, that's where you see the rise in, in the total cost for the grade level. So, the total request is twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars, which I think will put this district...
We're funding it, so where else at?
Sean, did you bring your checkbook with you?
We do have, we do have, you know, the funding to support this, um, request.
Right. That was already built into the issue.
We, we developed, when we approved the curriculum review cycle, we set aside forty thousand dollars, and it was approved, and so next year's budget will have forty thousand annually for new curriculum adoption. This year, there was no money set in the budget, but because of savings that we've had from maternity leaves, from, um, you know, um, other positions, we do have end-of-year funds that, that you would have to transfer to support that, but we do have the money available.
So, when would we be able to purchase those items?
We're hoping, you know, if you, um, we need to have a vote on whether the committee votes to adopt the new text, um, and then I would come and recommend a budget transfer with end-of-year monies next year, um, next month, and then we'd hope to purchase the materials before the end of the fiscal year.
Hope to purchase?
Yeah, we would go for it before June thirtieth. We have to spend the money by year.
Right, but that, that hope to purchase is subject to us approving.
Right.
So, we approve it, and there would be no...
Nope, and then we'll, then you have to transfer the money, um, to the text adoption.
The next meeting, we approve the transfer.
Yep.
And then...
Then we would buy.
Between June fifteenth and June thirtieth. Show ahead.
We'll send the purchase.
Is this text for sixth grade, or is it...
It's for sixth grade.
Because a lot of the content that you're teaching in fifth grade, especially Canada and Mexico, those regions are included in this subject area. So, I'm wondering, can this be a dual-purpose fifth and sixth grade, or is it above the levels of fifth grade?
Canada, Mexico.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Canada, Mexico.
I'm saying...
What's your page?
The next of her reading... Fourth grade is recommending piloting a new, um, text, um, this year, and that would be a free process for us to pilot, and then, you know, see how it works with kids, and then they would come forward with the recommendation. But, um, they really wanted to try it before we recommended a purchase. We didn't want to rush, you know, that, that decision.
Do you think you can get all the content in during the sixth grade year?
Okay.
So, and I apologize if I missed anything. So, fourth grade is taught what? What specifics?
Regions, regions, I think it's not here.
No.
Okay, so the regions of the United States.
Okay.
And, um, Mexico and Canada.
Okay, fifth grade?
Basically, the continental handbrake.
Okay.
Up through the causes of the Civil War.
Okay, and then sixth grade?
World and cultural geography excluding North America.
Cool, okay. Thank you.
Because...
Okay.
Well, it seems like it's kind of a lot more in-depth than what I'm...
I'm going back to class. I love history.
I think, I mean, we were impressed with what, um, the online texts have to offer, and, and National Geographic, because they do so much, you know, they have photographers all over the world. They have, on any of the chapters, you can click on and see live footage from different parts of the, the world. There's different stories, there's all kinds of artifacts you can look at electronically, so it's really very rich.
That, that was my next question, Tom. Does this integrate with the smart boards? Does this tax that?
Mm-hmm.
You already have. Today's lesson plan is X, and we have these videos that you can actually have the people that they went around talking to, talk to your class. This, everything.
Yeah, it's really neat.
That's awesome.
I'd be interested to see that, uh, put into place.
I'm going to send you back to school.
No, I probably fell out again.
Thank you very much, Debbie.
You didn't just say it.
Thank you very much.
To reiterate Jeff's comments from earlier, thank you guys all for coming tonight and for all the hard work you've done on this. And it's, uh, it's, it's, it's nice to see. Nice to see. You're going to learn something? You're not going to listen to the rest of the meeting?
And you can go to their website and look at the live...
No, 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 I, I mean, I, I hate to say it, but I mean...
No, you're not allowed to have anything in paper, Jeff. You only get the digital format. Isn't that the rule?
Right, yeah, the rest, you guys, you don't need me for the rest of the meeting anyway.
And if you want to look at the online, you can go to the National Geographic website and see the text features and what, what's available online.
Awesome, I'd love to do that.
Any other questions for the teachers or...
Simon, thank you, seriously.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
My one question was, I noticed that on the kindergarten slide, it said that there's a globe and a flag in every classroom. Is that standard in every single classroom? Is there, okay. I just didn't see it listed on all the other ones too, so I didn't know. All right.
So, the only thing we need a vote on would be the committee, because by policy, you have to vote to adopt a new text.
Yes.
We need to vote for the sixth grade. We don't need it for the third grade, because we're replacing the same text. It's the Massachusetts, we just want the new addition. Uh, but you would need to vote to approve.
Is there a motion to accept the National Geographic World...
Is there a second?
Culture and Geography Text.
Yeah, so it's been seconded.
Any discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And next month, they'll come with a recommendation for budget management.
Congratulations, Tom, now you got off. Also, whole summer's worth of reading.
Great.
Thank you, everybody.
Still on you.
It's still on me, so, um, feel free, you're welcome to stay, but I don't, you guys have kids coming in the morning, so feel free to go if you'd like.
Oh, yeah, fine. Yeah, fine. I see how that goes.
Next time, we're keeping them to the end.
Yeah, I'll see them in the hallway, they'll turn their heads. I can see it. Yeah, I got you.
No, no, that's good.
It's, it's above my reading level, sorry.
I'd love to see others, though. Seriously speaking.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, I have a few things. Um, the school improvement plans, um, annually, the principals from both schools come and present their school improvement plans to the school committee. Um, in the past, they've typically done it the end of the school year. I'd like to recommend that we wait and, and bring the school improvement plans for your review in October, and there's two reasons for that. One, we're in, pretty deep into the process, and I'll, I'll update you, um, it's the next item, I think, uh, in terms of district strategic planning. We had an administrative retreat a couple of weeks ago. We, um, I've shared with you my entry findings, but we did a SWOT analysis. We looked at all the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats of the district. We, um, developed three tentative district goals that I'll be bringing forward to the school committee for review and approval, and we're in the process of mapping out our action plan of what things need to happen for us to be able to realize those goals. The plan will be a three-to-five-year plan. I would really prefer to have that adopted and then have the principals write their plans to support that initiative. I don't, I think it's important that all of our goals are aligned and we're working in the same direction. So, for them to develop their goals without the guidance as to the district goals, it seems a little backwards. In addition, quite a few districts have moved the school improvement timeline to October, because school improvement plans also have to address, um, strategies for improving, um, closing academic achievement gaps, improving student performance, and we don't have the MCAS results from this spring's test until September. So, you could write your whole school improvement plan, then get your results, and find that you haven't addressed the areas of weakness and have to revise it and, and come back to committee. So, I would like to recommend that we change the timeline, that we complete the district
strategic plan, that they get their most current MCAS results, and they develop their plans to present to you in October with all that data in place.
Now, the plan itself will be a final plan?
It's a, it's a, you can either write a one- or two-year school improvement plan, and they would present their plans to the school committee. It's actually, the legislation's recently changing. School committees didn't have, currently just don't have to approve the plan. That's currently under the purview of the superintendent. But by practice, in this district, they have presented it, and the school committees have approved it. New legislation is pushing for that. Committees to start approving school improvement plans.
We're ahead of the curve.
Yeah, yeah. But again, I think it makes sense to have our district goals in place first so they can build, you know, off of those.
Anyone have any objective to move, objection to moving it to October?
Not at all.
Makes sense. Okay.
Okay. In your package, just so you know, I have to share with you annually the BIKO, because we're a member of the BIKO Collaborative. They have a financial audit. In your last month's packet, I gave you a copy of the audit report. They just got feedback from the department, from DSE, that there were a few things that they had to amend. So in your packet, you'll just see the amendment to that financial audit. It was just missing information, and information they wanted broken down. So that's just for your information there.
And we already voted to have you on the board again, right? Did we do that last week?
I believe we did.
I mean, last month?
I believe we did, but we, I'll have to check. Did we do that last month?
Oh, I can check in a minute.
Yes, we did. Yeah.
I know we talked about it, but I can't, it all kind of starts sporing together.
As far as strategic planning, again, we're in the process of developing the district goals. It's based on a lot of different sources of data, our achievement data, our, the interview data, the entry report. And I think by June, I'll be able to come to the committee with proposed district goals and an outline of strategy for your review. So I just want you to be updated on that. The last item I have is, we are part of a professional development collaborative called LSDO, it's Local Staff Development Opportunities. There's 12 different districts that are part of that. LSDO every year sponsors a summer conference. And this summer, the focus is on technology and using technology to enhance instruction. We have been approached to see if they could use the Freeman Kennedy School, because we have so much rich technology available as the host for the conference. I think it's a great thing, because a lot of our teachers will participate if it's local. But what I brought it to committee for was to consider, we have the building rental agreement, and it says what you charge per space. LSDO, they're going to need multiple spaces. They need the cafeteria, they want to have a vendor. So if we go by that chart, it's going to be unmanageable for them from a cost perspective. So what we would like to recommend is that the school committee consider establishing a reasonable one-time fee for using the school facilities. It'll be multiple classrooms, cafeteria, and probably hallways for vendors. In the past, they've used Dean College, and they've paid $1,000 for the one-day rental.
Is the company a nonprofit?
It's, yeah, it's a collaborative professional development. We all pitch in, and they, we sponsor professional development opportunities open to the 12 participating members.
Druckey, can we write off any portion of that regarding the discount? If, as a nonprofit, if they're a nonprofit?
We don't pay taxes.
Yeah, yeah.
You can.
The answer is yes.
So if the committee would be, would consider...
How much is it going to cost us for janitorial staff?
We have people here, anyway. It's during the school day and it's during summer hours. So it doesn't cost us anything in terms of additional staff. We may, the tech team has already met to see what they would need for tech support, but we do have staff here during those hours. So it's an opportunity for us to, I think, in two ways. One, to generate an additional $1,000 of revenue for one-day rental during a time the school's already open. And two, I think it gives a lot of our teachers, who are ready for additional training and technology, an opportunity to take rich courses locally.
And are they actually serving food as well?
Yep.
So are they going to be bringing in their own?
Yep, they take care of all of that.
Okay, so, and it meets...
You had me at hello. I'm already on one.
Thousand bucks, yep. Is there a motion?
Are the teams getting in this program for free?
Yep, yep.
So that's an added...
Yep, it's free to teachers in, if you're a member of the collaborative. So the workshop's free, they get PDPs, breakfast and lunches included.
What level of disruption will that be with the daily class?
Continue, Ed.
It's during the summer, it's in August, it's before school opens. And I met with the custodial staff to make sure that it's not going to impact our cleaning schedule and, you know, so it's, it's...
Continue, Ed.
It's $3,000.
Okay, so there was a motion to...
Already done, we already did it, we already...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're ahead of you.
No, you didn't vote, though. I got to...
That's all I had.
And I looked on the last month's minutes, and we did not, according to the minutes, appoint you as a boarded board person.
I thought we did, but...
I thought, I remember discussing it, but I don't see it...
Cover, you want to...
Oh, you know why, because there's two sets of minutes. We had two meetings last month.
But I didn't see it in, I didn't see it in either.
Cover ourselves, or just motion?
Yep, why don't we do it again?
Because the other one was just a budget.
Right.
And we didn't really discuss anything.
Okay, why don't we do it again, just to be sure?
Sean, you want to present a motion?
Okay. Is there a motion to make Dr. Alardi our, vote to make her our Board of Directors representative to the BIKO Collaborative?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, there we go.
Okay. That's all I had.
Okay, good. All right, committee reports. NEST, we met last night, we actually, unfortunately, we were a little disappointed in it from the standpoint of, we only got three grant applications in from all the, from all the teachers at both Freeman and HOD. And, and so, you know, we were kind of disappointed, and they weren't necessarily a whole lot of thinking outside of the box. I mean, it wasn't, you know, there was no, you know, we were hoping for a really exciting program that we could get behind and invest the money in. So the committee voted, and they'll announce it later in this week, just to grant one of the, one of the grants.
How many did you have last year?
Last year, we had seven or eight. And so, that's, that's, was a little disappointing. And also, I mean, it's free money. We were able to raise, you know, $6,000 or $7,000 this year, so would have loved to have spent it, but, oh, well. And the other thing was, at the community day, NEST is going to be having a table, and they're going to be selling the Norfolk t-shirts that we approved last month, so. Okay, KP?
KP.
We don't have all night, just...
Yeah, literally, we're waiting, still waiting on the two towns. There's, let's just say, we're waiting for some consistent collaboration. Because we've already voted from a Norfolk standpoint, our 8%, now it's up to them.
Budget? You have a minute?
I will defer to you if you would care to take the...
Sure, budget, we presented at town meeting for 3.65%, and that was granted. We have the handshake of an understanding with the selectmen. If the KP does not go to the 8% and comes back down, we will share in that and bring us back up to a full 4%. We're not going to get back to the 4.3, but a little bit is better than nothing, so. Worst-case scenario, we're at 3.65, best-case scenario, of an increase, you know, best-case scenario, a 4% increase. So we're, you know, we're able to bring on the, you know, and in addition, I talked to the selectmen, one of the major items on that additional 3, you know, 0.3% was fixing the sprinkler system at HLFD, and they said they would be willing to put that on the fall town meeting as an exceptional, extraordinary one-time need. And so that wouldn't be in our budget, it would be, it would be a town project, and they would take over the funding of that, so that wouldn't even affect our budget.
Which is great. The other thing, the, at town meeting, the town voted to support the CPC's donation of $350,000 for the HOD for playground innovation, so we did get that funding as well.
Yep, so that'll be starting.
We're hoping for...
Any second.
We're in the process of working with the landscape architect to put the RFP together to send out for public bid. We hope that will go out sometime close to the end of May, because we have to put it in next Tuesday to be posted the following Wednesday. And it has to be out for a period of time. So hopefully, by the end of June, the school committee can review bids and meet to award the contract. We're hoping the work would start probably right after the 4th of July.
Technology, you said you didn't, technology doesn't have anything?
I can essentially read from what Adam's given me, but that's about it.
Okay.
Inger, do you have anything from Adam at all?
No, the tech committee met, again, they are working on several different projects, but I don't have to, they're working on finalizing the district vision, doing some assessment of our current resources.
They're still reviewing the stock chart.
Yep.
And they're going to be developing new groups for initiation, for consideration of the next five years.
Okay, good. And mark policy? We don't have anything on particular.
Meeting the 21st.
Okay. Okay, we have, on our new business, we have one application for a community partnership. It's a renewal, it's the Norfolk Lions. So you have a list of all the different things they get back to events, if they get back to the school on the second page. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.